Alrighty guys, it's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get the Solomon District Board meeting started on April 13th at 7:00 PM. If we'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read our board's district mission statement. USD 393 will prepare its students mentally, socially, and physically to live successfully in a modern society. We have a couple changes to the agenda. On line item, let's see, 3C, that changes to from $900 to $993. We need to add letter E, and that's approve Anita Butler, Ron Free, Jessica Fullitz, and Tracy Rogers as substitute teachers. Am I talking too fast? Right here. Anita Butler, Ron Free.
I'm sorry, it's on the printed, on your log.
It is on there.
Yeah.
It's not on here.
I printed it on.
So if you log in, it's actually on here.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay. And then we also need to add F, accept Connor Coney's resignation as high school cheer coach. Also, under 6C, change summer capital outlay projects. We're going to scratch that, we're going to change that to lunch prices. Alrighty, so, any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the preliminary consent agenda?
I'm going to approve preliminary consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the preliminary consent agenda by Carrie. Do I have a second? A second by Todd, that was quick. Alrighty, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Jessica, alright, motion carries. Onto line item four, presentations, proclamations, recognitions. Mrs. Martin, it's all yours.
Alright.
And thank you ladies for coming, showing up.
Yeah. I don't know. How are we doing? Technical stuff?
Got some technical.
Um, I've met most of you, but some of you I haven't met, 71. And I'm currently a fourth grade teacher next year. I'll be doing science, which I'm excited about. And I'm just going to talk to you a little bit about what we've done this year in science. And then what kind of my vision is for next year and what supplies we need to be able to do that. So, the big change I think that's happened in science is the next generation science standards have come out. I don't know if you guys have heard about those or not, but they were adopted by Kansas last year, and so they're pretty new. And there are huge changes in what science standards used to be. Not only in what is expected from students, just like the Common Core, the rigor has increased and what expectations have increased, but they also are developed with engineering standards. That's not really been taught in science before, which is exciting, getting some of that STEM things in there. STEM is science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and it's a big push in a lot of places right now. And then also, just a different, whole different way of teaching science. We're no longer expected to teach science, you know, where we sit down and do vocabulary and those kinds of things. They want us to do the five E's. And the big focus of that is for kids to be doing hands-on modeling and experiments and those kinds of things. And you're supposed to start the lesson with that, and so that they are then developing what they, their own theories and ideas about science, instead of us telling it to them. So, we are in our plant unit right now, and we introduced the plant unit with a plant investigation, where I gave each student a flower. And they had to, we took it apart, and we talked about each piece. And it was so cool, because I don't think that a lot of the kids had really taken a flower apart before, or at least looked at it when they did. So, and then I let them kind of come up with their own vocabulary about what they think each of these pieces did. And they were able to come to the conclusion after we had dissected this plant and where they looked at all the parts, for them to kind of realize how pollination worked, without us even, you know, giving vocabulary or any of the material yet. They didn't have quite the right labels and things like that, but for them to understand, you know, that this is the way it works, and I found that out, and I own that then, instead of, you know, just regurgitating that information. So I really think it's exciting, but the problem is, is that we don't have many materials to teach this way. All of our science stuff is like, super outdated, and even if it wasn't, it still wouldn't apply to the next generation's science standards, because it's just so different. So, I went with Mr. Cope a couple months ago to Green Bush, and they had a convention up there where we looked at a lot of different science programs. And one in particular just really stood out. It was the hardcore and the science fusion. And I have a, this is the fifth grade science book. And what I really liked about them is that they implemented a lot of the Common Core too. So, there's reading, there's math, and then there's science in here too. And this isn't a normal textbook. This is fifth grade, okay? You never see a textbook that looks like this in fifth grade. But they can write on it, there's questions that they can answer right into a textbook. And so this is their textbook, and they get it for one year, and then it's on a subscription. And so we get new textbooks next year. And the kids have really, I've actually tried this out with them, with our forces unit and with our plants, kind of see if this is something that we wanted to do. I don't want to spend lots of money and get something that I have never tried before. So, have you guys enjoyed the kind of the getting to write in your text and getting the figures of it out? I mean, we just had copies because they were black and white, so they haven't been perfect, but it was kind of fun, right?
Yeah.
And so we get to interact with the text, and I really, I like this about that. There also is some online materials, and I'll show that if I can get it up there. If we don't, that's fine too. But the online is pretty cool, because they have some like interactive labs that they can do like right on their iPads. And so that could be homework that some of the older grades take home and do, then they're able to do a lab at home then. Or if we get the e-text, then they would necessarily have to take this text home, this is theirs, if they lose it or misplace it, it's going to be a big deal. So they can take it home on the iPad and, you know, do and sign it there. And I'm not sure if they can try that in or not, but at least they can have that material with them on iPads. They also have videos and all sorts of really cool stuff online. We haven't done this much. Yeah. Good thing I bought a case for it. Oh, so I've been really impressed with the Fusion series. The couple things I don't particularly, I don't know, I liked a lot of it, but just with the playing that I've gotten to do so much so far, is that they don't, I wish they had some more labs. They have a big lab at the after, before each lesson. And the lessons are usually multiple pages, in which we've been doing like a page a day, because I only have like 20 minutes to teach science a day, and then we have our lab day that's like 15 minutes. So, I wish they had some more labs there. That's something that I can bring in and I've had experience with, so I'm not too worried about that. I do like that it has such a strong base to stand on, so that's really good, especially since I haven't taught middle school before, I think that's important. But then I went to the Cats Camp on Friday, and we thought we had this all figured out and have a quote and everything, and the FOS people were there. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with the FOS kits, but it's something that I've taught with before, and they have, they're very hands-on, they have tons of supplies and just the really cool labs for the kids. And the reason I didn't look at the FOS kits is because they haven't really had strong reading materials with them. And I know that how important it is with the Common Core, that even in fourth grade, we're expected to have 50 percent, you know, nonfiction and 50 percent fiction. And we just don't get that with just our reading series, and so it's important that we're getting that in some of our extra subjects as well. So, I didn't even look at FOS, because I thought they wouldn't really cover our needs. But, they recently come out with reading materials. So, we're having a FOS person come and discuss with us a little bit later this month about maybe that being an option as well. So we have planned on bringing a bid to you guys tonight, but we're going to wait, because I don't feel comfortable making sure that, we want to make sure that we have the best for our kids. So, we'll wait a month and check out FOS and see if that's going to be comparable or not. So, we'll have something for you in May hopefully. I'm going to let these ladies talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we've done in science so far this year, and what they've liked about it, and maybe some things that you didn't like about it. And we've actually had a FOS kit that we've done in science. They have them at the Smoky Hill Education Center that you can rent. And we rented one for the heat unit, and then we've also done forces and motion complete science fusion, so. And then we've also done other labs and things like that too. But, why don't you ladies come on up here? Stand up. Alright, so, who's going to tell us about the heat?
Well, introduce yourselves first.
Yeah, definitely.
I'm Emma Boyer.
I'm Sarah Herbl.
And they're fourth graders. And they're all excited about presenting to you guys tonight, so.
It's no pressure.
Now they're embarrassed.
They're never despite the program.
Alright, we've learned a little bit about heat and maybe an experiment with batteries, wires, and light bulbs.
Well, that's electricity, you know.
Electricity.
No, it wasn't with our FOS kit, that was just with our materials that we had. We can talk about that. Do you want me to take that? I don't think we're going to be able to show anyways.
Sure. What we did was, with electricity, was we took batteries, wires, and light bulbs. We had to make the light bulb turn on with the batteries and wires, and some of them turned out good, some of them didn't.
And did I give you any instructions before?
Yeah, yes.
No, I didn't. I just gave you wires and batteries and stuff, right? I said, make a circuit.
Well, we have this holder, we put the battery.
Well, I had to give you like some, like, how to put the wires in.
We put the wires in it, and we had a blue thing that held the light bulb, and the wires were on the metal thing that made the light bulb go up.
They had to work in groups, and they, I just put wires out and a light bulb and batteries, and I said, make the light work. And then, the cool thing was, I said, do it a different way, you know, after they got it to work. And so then, we talked about series and parallel circuits that way, because you can make a series circuit pretty easily, but then you rather have to think about, oh, what's another way that I can make this light bulb light up? And then what happens when I add two batteries? And what happens when I have one battery and two light bulbs? So, we did a lot of fun stuff there, and was able to really lead into our. Alright, now talk about heat. Okay, so we got a FOS kit, right? And had quite a few different experiments that we did with it, right? We started with shadows, you know, tell me about that?
So we went outside when it was a sunny day, and one of them, we had a partner, and we stood there in some way, and they had chalk and traced our shadow. And then the next day, we went out there and stood the exact same way and where we did it, and saw if the shadow was in a different spot.
And we went out at different times of the day, and saw how our shadows changed. Okay, and I think the next one was?
With soil and water.
Yeah, soil and water and sand.
Soil, water.
And this is where Sarah, we got this really cool conclusion that we drew after we did this experiment, later in the year.
We took thermometers, and we took thermometers in the sand, water, and soil, and we had to see which one had the most heat or which one had the lowest heat.
Or like, retained the heat better, right?
In the shade or in the sun.
Right, right. So we put one like set in the shade and one set in the sun, and we took the temperature and recorded our data, made graphs. And we even talked about lake effect snow from that, right? Like why that happens, because water holds heat better than the land. And then later, we were, it was winter time and it snowed, right? And all the snow has melted except for where?
On the baseball diamond.
Yeah.
And we had to think about it and say, why we thought that happened? And I thought, because if the baseball diamond is sand, and the grass needs water, then the snow melted, and it took up all that water, and the baseball diamond where the sand was didn't.
Right, and that the dirt would heat up faster than the sand, right? So because the sand hold the dirt longer, yeah. So they were able to draw conclusions from those students. So, did you guys like the FOS kit that we did? We had some other experiments that we did with that as well. Alright, Sarah, do you want to share about the forces one that we did with the vision?
I'm going to do that.
Mm-hmm, that was a good one.
So we had foam, and we had marbles, and we had to build a roller coaster, and then put our marble on the roller coaster, and make it to where the marble didn't fall off, and get it to an end point. And everybody had really cool roller coasters, like some on the wall, some on the ground, and then mine through the hook of my book bag.
I know, we were worried that, because we didn't get finished, we're like, oh, you got to leave your book bag here every day. So what was the point for the roller coasters?
Like when it goes up, if it goes slower and wide, and then down faster and more.
What's that word? Put you on the spot? Where we change speed and direction?
Velocity, yeah.
So we were able to kind of figure out velocity, and then how do we calculate speed? Does anyone know? Distance divided by time, right? Yeah. Yeah. So, we calculated speed, which is a pretty high thing for a fourth grader to be doing, because I don't know if that is kind of exciting. But, that was all through their vision, and I can let you guys look at this book, but like I said, I think it's pretty cool. But anyways, do you have any questions for us?
Somebody I can think of.
Well, I really.
Doesn't sound like fun, I want to go back.
Yeah, well, you guys are welcome anytime. We're just setting off plants this week, so. Not as fun as it's roller coasters maybe, but.
Well, with the roller coasters, I'm impressed you guys have done velocity calculations and stuff like that in fourth grade.
Yeah. And then, I had never calculated speed with kids before, especially in the elementary, and they really caught on, and you guys were able to do it. And they would, they could even tell, like, we timed different parts of our roller coasters and were able to tell like, the speed of different sections. It was cool.
And rubber band thing.
Oh, yeah, we did that. That was one of our initial experiments.
We had a rubber band.
This is a little dangerous.
And a ruler, and so two people had to hold their fingers up with the rubber band, and we had a marble, and so.
That's not sounding good.
No windows are broken!
We had to make the marble go really far, and for the yardstick, we had to see how far it went, and we had to use our timer.
And we calculated speed with that one too, right? Because we had different, they had to pull the rubber band back different lengths and see how much, you know, if the different amount of force supplied changed how far the marble would go. And we started with the speed experiment, about how our idea of fast and slow is different for everyone, and why speed is important. And so, we calculated everybody's idea of a slow walk, oh my gosh, some of them were like snails, and then other, yeah, were fine. You know, it was a big difference though, right? Between some people's idea of what slow was and other people's idea of what slow was. And so that we needed a scientific definition of speed, instead of just saying, oh, that's faster or slower, so.
Mrs. Martin, how long do you do science this year?
We, I started the year with an hour and a half once a week.
Hour and a half once a week?
Mm-hmm. And when I started testing out the Fusion, I needed more time, and so I took out one of my daily five sessions, and we did, we do 20 minutes a day with some of the reading and that sort of thing, and then we still have that hour and a half lap time.
And then the other thing that will be different for next year, just so you know the comparison, with the schedule for four, five, six, that they will get it, they're going to get it three times a week for 49 minutes.
I'm very excited about that.
And so they'll be able to, I mean, you can already tell that there's going to be more and more mathematics incorporated in the reading, and there's just going to be more time allotted for it, so that's one of the things we're excited about.
Are there state assessments, will they remain the same in seventh grade?
And they, I think the state assessment's moving to fifth grade for next year's, isn't it?
Correct.
You guys get to take it again.
It's going to be a different session.
Right, I think it'll be more aligned to the next generation's science standards.
No, seventh and eighth grade will get science every day. I was going to say.
I know.
Fourth, fifth, and sixth will get it, that science will get it every day.
But also be doing social studies with the fourth and fifth and sixth grade, goes somewhere else, so we can separate them. Alright, do you guys have any other questions?
Excellent, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
That was really cool, thank you.
Yes, thank you guys, and I appreciate your time.
Oh, absolutely.
Do you want your book?
Oh, yeah, well.
I can bring it.
Okay, thanks. It's actually a fifth grade book, it's one of my rockshanks and stuff. And if anybody's interested in seeing more, I have gobs of staples, so. They were very generous when I sent those materials. Alright, you guys have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Very good. Reports, Mr. Bogra, all yours?
Kind of just to recap, but during sprint break, both Dean Anne and Beth were trained on the new accounting, fund accounting system, and have now completed a certified payroll and a, have we done classified yet? Or that's going out?
Well, we did a, we did a model classified.
Model classified.
Good management.
Right.
On the old system.
Right.
We're getting ready to do our first live.
Classified system, classified payroll on the new accounting software, and I think it's running pretty smoothly. I mean, we got everything.
It was a tough week.
Yeah, it was a very busy week. The block grants, obviously that's been signed by the governor, and the way it looks is that we'll lose 55, 54,742 this year, 45,815 is what they're projecting for next year, and 7,101 for the 2016-17 year. And then we've kind of looked at some preliminary Title I allocations, now this isn't set in stone yet, but we kind of expect to lose a little bit there because of declining enrollment, lower risk population. Right now, we're, I guess, around 6,100. I don't know if you've paid attention to Senate Bill 294, we listened in on a seminar, or a webinar, excuse me, about this new finance formula, it's going to be promoted. There's still a lot of things that I see wrong with it. It looks a lot more complex than our current finance formula. You know, they complain that our current finance formula is too complex and you can't understand it, but you look at what the new one, 294, that's being proposed, and it's more complicated than this. The pieces that I have the biggest problem with is the funding is going to be based upon census data or your population, and so the question is, how does that affect your out-of-district students? You know, well, and so if, you know, what, how are we going to be funded based upon our census, you know, and our population data? The other thing is, the other thing that I'm also kind of concerned about is, they're looking at funding us based upon success of students, they want to look more at a success model. And I'm not sure how you, how they're going to measure success. They want us to look at where kids are at once they're out of, once they leave here. So, looking at where are they, year after they get out of here, where are they two years, where are they four years, where are they, you know? And I don't know how we're going to track all of that. I really don't know how Wichita, and Shime, Michigan, and Blue Valley, and Johnson County are going to track all theirs. That would, that seems almost impossible to me to try to track those. And the other, when I think about that, you know, how do you measure success? You know, it seems like we live in a, we live in a pretty conservative state, and I think one that promotes, you know, family values, and I think for a long time, we promoted that it'd be nice if we, the mom could stay home and raise the children, and dad would go off to work. Well, I'm not sure that there's, how would they look at that if the mother decided to stay home and raise the children? Is that not being successful? So, I think it's just really interesting to see how they're, how they want to do this, but, and then obviously, it's, nothing's been done with it yet, but those are some of the concerns that I have. We, I had somebody out here last week, looked at the track, and I thought that, took him out, and they looked at our track, and they thought that we had a really good, good foundation, good curving. They thought if we could get some areas smoothed out, that you could lay some rubber down, a lot cheaper than I really thought you could do it. The quote that came into me with black and lines was 59,000. And if we could get the other areas, you know, that have been cut out and repaired, if we could get those smoothed over. And I don't know what that would cost, so that's something we'll have to look into, to see what that would cost to get those smoothed over, because obviously that would be cost on top of. But, they thought our track looked really good for the, as old as it was. So, I thought that was encouraging, because I know that's been a concern of the community in wanting to do something with that. Security system, we finally got some quotes, and I thought I'd just let Scott talk a little bit about that tonight, because he could probably tell you more about it. But I think this is about four buzzing systems that are four main entrances with cameras, and we just got the bid late this afternoon, so I haven't really had much time to put all the capital outlay projects together. I wanted to get this before I gave you, you know, my recommendations for going forward with the summer, so. That's really all I have right now. I think we've, a lot of positive things going on. Mr. Cope, want to talk a little bit about this, but I thought the kindergarten roundup went really well. I'm sorry, why?
I need to put it in my report.
Oh, okay, well.
I talked about that.
Yeah, we had more show up than we did last year, and you know, our enrollment was, and we were worried about our kindergarten enrollment this past year, and you know, we were 29 to start, I know, and I think we've been around that number all year, and we had in the twenties.
We have 26 on the board for next year, before we even go to our enrollment. We screened 22 now, we had one come in just the other day. So all but, I think, four were screened that we know of, which is amazing. I mean, we were hoping that we would get, at the very beginning, and I was talking to several people, and we were a little concerned that we were, it might be a boring day, because we only had about 12 people we were going to screen, and all of a sudden we had 10 more people. people show up. And it was great. Mrs. Vandy Creek helped out, or no, I'm sorry, Mrs. Vandy Creek did not. She, her daughter was in the hospital at the time. But we had our school psych, Stephanie Hudson came over and helped. She did all the evaluation at the very end and did the totaling it all up, which you have to have someone who's trained professionally to do that. So, she, great that she could be there and help us out with that. Lori Langhorst, our school social worker, helped out. Mr. Long and then Mrs. Rowletter, and they all did the screening. The two kindergarten teachers did the tour. And then, I sort of just did the visiting with parents and doing the parent survey. The parent survey at the very beginning, which we thought was very beneficial because we find out whether or not, they, they meaning the parents, what they see at home compared to what we were seeing that day. And the feedback on the dial four system is great feedback. It allowed us to actually look at them. We're not gonna allow our teachers to see them yet, but we shared the feedback with the, with the parents, of course, but we aren't sharing it with our teachers just because, you know, these are kindergarteners and it's one snapshot in time. And when we, when we create our kindergarten groups, we don't, we don't want, nobody wants to be labeled, per se, before you even start your first kindergarten day. So, we're just gonna let it go for a little bit and if some red flags come up, we can go back to the screening. And, you know, early September, if something comes up, we can go back and refer to that screening. So, great feedback, great things for us to look forward to and things that we already have on, you know, that were already marked down saying, hey, let's look for this in September next year. So, I thought it was a great day. I thought it was a really good day. Our parents' teacher person was there as well.
But that's the most we've ever had. And I thought it was organized well. I thought they did a good job, brought a lot of more people in. And I think we'll have more kids that'll show up in August.
What did we get last year? We got twelve? All of a sudden, they were coming in in flocks there and they're like, oh, man, it seemed like I was giving a two-year-old time. So, I would expect to see what another ten or twelve. So, you're looking at thirty to thirty-two? Or thirty, no, thirty-six, I'm sorry, thirty-six? Somewhere between thirty-two and thirty-six?
Potentially.
It'll be a good class.
Um, other than that, let's see, we'll just, you know, you'll probably talk about prom. I just, it's been, been a good month, so. All right? That's all I have for this time. Unless you get questions?
Any questions, Mr. Baudra? All righty, K-5. Well, sorry, I didn't put on the screening because it was actually a very, very good day. It just seemed like it was so long ago, back in March twenty-seventh is when we did that. So, amazing how time flies. Lots of stuff has happened. Second step training is coming up. I just wanna highlight that, that I do appreciate you guys giving us the two days off Monday, Tuesday to go to that training. I think it'll be very valuable. And the nice thing, I wanna keep noting on there that not one die will it cost our district. Plus, they wrote us a check for two thousand dollars to spend on any classroom supplies that we need to implement the program. And it's crazy because most of the time, when you have a grant, they need you to track it to the scent. In this case, and it's by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, don't get it confused with K S D. Don't get those two confused. So, that's who it's through. Evaluations, I put this in here, I didn't know if you realized exactly how all that entails, and I just wanna make that a little bit, we did, I did, there's twenty-seven official evaluations have taken place at about forty-five minutes per evaluation, plus twenty minutes, give or take, to fill it out. Then, you gotta have, out of twenty-seven evaluations, you have to have a meeting with every single one of them. So, basically, about forty-seven hours have been spent on nothing but evaluations this year. And that's not, that's nothing bad on Mr. Dooley or myself or our staff. That is across the state of Kansas and is amazing requirements. But the good thing about all of the evaluations that I do wanna say is that I think it has opened up the lines of communication and it has allowed us to see, and you saw Mrs. Martin here as an example, as well as we can march other teachers in here, but allows you to really get to know what's happening in the classroom. And I think that's what you wanna know anyways. But now, it's forcing administrators that didn't do their job to actually do their job, per se. And so, that's a, that's a good thing. I've enjoyed it. I just didn't figure it out until I added it up and I'm like, ooh, that's a lot of time. State assessments, we started today. We found out today, for us, we started today, we started with the middle school first, but for the elementary school, one of the things that we have found is that not all of them are there. If you have one half of something and it just says one slash, there's no, there's either no numerator or no denominator, sometimes it depends, then it's been crazy for our math. So, I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna do with the results, but I think we wrote down about six different problems that we had today. So, I don't know how that's valid data or how it's going to be credible at all. So, but who knows what will go from there. Field day and relay recess, I think I might have discussed this a little bit. On Thursday, the teachers will get the final and we'll send it out then as far as what's happening on field day. Relay recess is like relay for life. They did it at Abilene last year and the same group is coming over and doing it and those ladies are so passionate about it and it was, it was fun to sit down with them and listen to how relay recess is gonna take place. And we thought, why not tie it in with our field day because we have grandparents and parents here and so, just make it a big old day and a big event. So, I think it'll be a pretty cool thing for us. Field trips, it's that time of year, we're headed there. And then, it seems like at least once, one week is probably going somewhere. And I wanna thank you guys for doing that again. And then, last but not least, is the quote for wonders. Good news, they came down, I think, twenty-three hundred dollars from the quote from the last board meeting. So, there's a little bit of money saved for there. Anyway, that's all I have. Any questions? Thank you. All righty. You're up.
Okay. Mr. Cope spoke shortly or quickly about state assessments. We started right after spring break with our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and similar to elementary school, we've had some issues, thinking sophomores, they got it boxed with several fractions. He could not see the denominator on any of the fractions. One of the, one of the questions didn't even have, or had a reading passage with no question on it. So, there's a few glitches to say. So, you know, we're in the business of trying to get data so we can make decisions based on what's best for our students. So, it's a little frustrating when the data's not as valid as we want. But we also have ACT Inspire that we'll be administering this spring, so we got a couple of different sources to get that information from. We have some prom on Saturday. I thought it was a very, very good night. Big thanks to juniors, they decorated on Thursday. And then, Ms. Griffin did an excellent job designing the theme and all of those Candyland nightclub themes. So, that ended up very well. Big thanks to all the parents who helped with that prom. I know that's a long night, but, you know, you do it for the kids and it was fun. I think they had fun with the different laser tag and the glow-in-the-dark volleyball. So, I was, it was fun. All the kids, a lot of the seniors were there. That's really what I looked for in our prom is that seniors show up, so. Senior scholarships, we had Kevin Einhaus and Mary Flora come talk about this all with the scholarship foundation, make sure our seniors knew exactly what they needed to do when they filled out the scholarships. Talked about making sure that they thanked them once they received the scholarship, all applications and those kinds of things. Tomorrow, we're going to Assembly in Chapman on texting and driving, sponsored by the safety organization out of Topeka with a grant brought to Dickinson County. All the, all Dickinson County schools were invited, but we, us and Chapman are the only ones that chose to attend. So, I think it would be, and they say it's interactive, so they're gonna be doing some different things. So, I think it's gonna be good, good for our kids. We'll start pre-enrolling kids this week for classes next year. Mr. Long's done a great deal of work in putting together our course description booklet and the master schedule. And Mr. Cope has agreed to help out, so we're gonna, him, Mr. Cope, myself, and Mr. Long are gonna enroll kids on Friday. And then, on Friday evening, we're gonna have an enrollment night, have some hot dogs and kind of share our visions, our plans for the future of our junior, senior high school. Today, we had the Kansas Teacher of the Year team come to visit. Big thanks to Solomon Corp, Dickinson County, and everyone else who helped out with donating. I think we represented our district very well. I think they were very impressed when they visited our classrooms and saw some of the things that were going on and toured our facilities that, you know, a lot of them were from big schools in the Topeka area, Washburn, Shoney Heights, Holton, not quite as big, Wamigo. And to have your entire campus connected as one was something that they had never seen before and I think they found it quite interesting. And I had a, had a good day, so I think they were very impressed with what we were doing. I got tons of stuff, but I guess I'll stop because they say, my other fellow administrators say I talk too much. One last thing is, you can read one of them. We have three track meet changes at the middle school level. It all said on School Messenger. First is the Canton-Galva track meet for Thursday. Is that the correct date? Jeff Thursday?
Yep.
It moved, was moved to Mount Rich, so we'll send out via School Messenger the correct address. The Wakefield track meet, we found out last week, was moved to Clay Center. Moved from one P M. to ten-thirty A M., so I'll include that on the School Messenger. And then, we decided to move our meet from one P M. to four P M. I just think it's better to do that for school. The kids don't wear a poll. They've already missed a lot of time of classroom instruction due to state assessments. That way, we can keep them in school a little bit longer, so. Several other things I mentioned, you can run through those. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Atkinson, your turn.
I'm not sure how much depth you want me to get into on the track uniforms. Do you want me to take you through the beginning, through the end, or procedures? I have it here. I'll be talking about personnel.
I gave you a little bit of a board update, I don't, but I wanted Jim here to be able to answer some questions if you wanted to know what was.
I think we know the beginning. Why don't you give us the outcome? As far as what we're doing now?
Well, right now, I got involved on March the thirtieth after I found out we had uniforms in-house that I was unaware of or ordered. And found out that the ordering was completely done for boys. The uniforms that was picked out, I hadn't even seen the uniform yet, but it was this sheet here that I finally found out. And this is the boys' top and bottom. And seventy-six uniforms are ordered for both girls and boys from this. And girls' and boys' shirt does not work. So, I contacted Blue Sporting, told them the problem's that they took an order without a P O. They took an order without the approval or signature of any administrator in this building and that their rep never contacted that they were ordering or placed the order or notified us until we actually had the goods in-house. Like, again, I had this all laid out on exactly timeframe, date by date, all the way through to the present date, to what happened. So, anyway, the salesman that sold us this changed companies immediately after the order and went to B S N. And so, therefore, I contacted the president of Blue Sporting Goods in Nebraska and told him the situation that it was unacceptable. We would take the orders since we've already received it and signed for it, so I mean, but we had to have girls' uniforms. It should've been in the discussion. It was in an email to Mike Mann, which is the salesman from Coach Nordberg, questioning if what about the boys' uniform, would they fit to the girls and so forth like that. But that didn't happen until February the twenty-fourth. So, when the orders come in, it was all boys. So, I went back and asked the coaches to submit with Mr. Dooley involved with this as well from reading that they had to give me the girls' sizes. And in the original order, they didn't have youth sizes down there. We've got some small kids in those schools. And they're trying to fit them in high school sizes that they didn't even consider when they ordered middle school, per se, on-site. So, therefore, we was able to get that information, get some youth sizes, get some smalls, get some fat, both for girls. And we made thirty-four uniform changes. Mr. Dooley has the uniforms in his office that I'll get from him. And they are in the process, to Nike, of getting these uniforms at no cost to us. We will return thirty-four of the boys' uniforms in return. So, we will have thirty-four middle school girls' uniforms and we will have the rest in boys' for middle school and high school. So, we made those adjustments. And we won't get those uniforms in because they're special made probably until we regional track, which is the end of May. So, basically, we'll have new uniforms for the following year. I mean, there's just no way that they can get this, it's specialized, this particular uniform, it's very specialized, how they make it, and it takes them about forty-five days to sixty days to get the uniforms made. But we have made all the adjustments. So, that's where we're at right now. The orders have been placed, the sizes have been, I'm sorry.
There won't be any additional costs?
She asked if there's any additional cost.
No. This is, it's a cost that is on the sales order at the present time counting both uniforms and warmups. The cost is eight thousand nine oh five six three. There's no additional cost to but the original orders that was placed at that time.
So, will those middle school girl uniforms fit to high school girls?
I ordered high school girls, too. I have, I have it bounced out here. I have it laid out.
No, you're right.
For girls, I have it laid out here for both middle school and high school. What we needed from what, Coach Cross helped us get with the girls and get some size and measurements done. One night after practice, I was in Denver and so, he took care of that and we just was able to get sizes for both middle school and high school. And that's what we based our order on, which pretty well, when I would go back and look at the volleyball uniforms, tops and bottoms, pretty well, we're pretty close to that, those figures there that fits our volleyball uniforms for both middle school girls and high school girls. So, that's pretty well where we're at. Now, I wanna make one comment to this process. We have a basic process in place. We have now even changed it somewhat to make sure that this can't happen again. And that is, normally, a coach will request for a uniform. So, we'll ask a sales company to come in and give us some examples or a lot of cases they'll send us on the computer and we're able to create uniforms on the computer. Then, we talk and we look and we show it to the students, like the volleyball uniforms for girls were involved in the order processing. We elected colors, we made some changes here, made some changes there. Then, we got down to sizes and so forth. Then, we started to process that they was to give us the preliminary cost and figures based on those sizes and cost, which we look at. Then, I would normally walk that, Mr. Baudra, we look at the figures and look at that and if he approved it at that time, then we would place an order. I'd go to Beth, she'd give me a purchase order number, which I made sure that the Sporting Goods Company would have that purchase order number, that they would place that on this order form here. So, when the invoice came in, Beth and them could reference that to the actual order with the signed documents. Now, we've put that one step further. We've got Mr. Dooley involved where we do the first processes, then we go to Mr. Dooley to get a signature on that. Then, we go to Mr. Baudra and get another signature. We're gonna wind up with two signatures on because then, we go to Beth to get the order.
Large athletic purchases, it, it, Mr. Axon went straight to Mr. Baudra in the past for, like, the backboards in the gym and a lot of the other district, district athletic purchases, went through Mr. Baudra. What did the difference?
Right, but we're just gonna add another signature on there so that we have two signatures, administrative. They were not informed on the track uniforms. I can tell you, the talk started in September that Mr. Cross asked Mr. Baudra if we could look at track uniforms. Well, if you look at our uniform sheet, it says track is up for that upcoming, so doesn't harm to look at uniforms. It costs anything to look or do. Well, on nine-twenty-three, that's when Coach Nordberg sent me an email asking me, what's my budget? At first, I knew that he come hit coach. But anyway, he asked me for what the budget was and what uniforms usually ran. I said, usually, if we do middle school and high school, it runs between forty-five hundred and sixty-five hundred dollars. If you go back and look at the volleyball uniforms, you go back with football uniforms and the basketball, they run in that neighborhood somewhat. So, that kinda gave him a range at that time. And they had already looked at a particular uniform, which was basically the one I just showed you there. And so...
Did he meet Mr. Nordberg and Mr. Cross?
Well, Mr. Cross was out of it there after nine-twenty-three when Mr. Nordberg took the head coach job that was official at that time. He then asked me for a budget and that. And I had no further conver, all the conversations from September the twenty-third through November the twenty-fifth was done between Coach Nordberg and Mike Bann, of Blue Sporting. I had an email again from eleven-twenty-five where he sent me, asked me about the budget and he also wanted a rulebook. So, I gave him the same numbers that we were in a tight budget. So I gave him the same numbers that we were in a tight budget, probably we might not be able to get the uniforms this year. We did with our next year's budget, but I talked with Mr. Will, we've talked several months. Well, it's just too tight this year, let's, let's don't do it. So I was really postponing him out there. And then in December, he asked me, well, about, well, he thought, December 2nd, first of all, he thought the uniform was too expensive for us and that the warm-ups would be too expensive as well. And he stated that two times in his emails. So he asked me about ordering and I said, well, we'll take a look at them, but I need you to get me the sizes of both middle school and high school so we can take a look and see what an order like that would cost us. From that point on, I had no further contact with him. And he took it that when I asked him to do sizes, he took it on himself to order the product without any P.O.s or any other thing at that time.
In his defense, he was under the impression that he was supposed to order.
Those black or gray?
Are those Bennington's?
So none of us had any input into the uniform color, size, or ordering procedure. Voder was a black, Dooley was in the black. I can vouch for them that they was totally, and I was just as surprised when I heard the order had arrived when they said you had boxes in the office. And I said, what are they? And they said, track uniforms. That's the first that I was aware of. Do we have the uniform, or the warm-ups?
I have, we do have warm-ups there.
What color are they?
Green.
Green?
Alex brought his home to show me because he was so proud of the warm-ups. And they are a nice looking warm-up.
They're nice. And we'll wear them, they'll wear them this year.
They're wearing the warm-ups this year?
So I just, he wanted to inform the board, the processes that the administration was caught blindsided just as well as I was caught blindsided to this. But we're trying to get this corrected.
Can we remind our coaching staff what our school colors are?
Well, if I'd known that they was black, they never would have been ordered. I would never allow the order to go first off because I knew we were in a tight budget and I didn't want to order them. Because I kept telling Mr. Voder, no, we're not ordering, we're not ordering. And that was in December, well, the order was placed on 12/31 without any of us having the knowledge of it. Nor would we showed the colors. I'd never saw the colors, but did, do you see the colors?
I never saw anything, but he was under the impression that he, he thought, he thought he was supposed to order. I don't know how he got that impression.
Well, if you read his job descriptions, there's nowhere in the coaches, that coaches' job description that they are to order or purchase anything without going through the proper procedure. Just like as if they were a teacher, there's proper procedures that they must follow and go through if they want goods. And he, to me, he knew some of the process that to order eight thousand nine hundred dollars worth, you better have some kind of approval to back out because I would never go out and stick my neck out for eight thousand nine hundred dollars to order. Because I'd be expected to pay for them primarily.
Is it safe to assume that they know, know the proper procedure now?
I wouldn't have sure.
This is the first time we've had this trouble with the coaches as far as ordering. Because we did football, we followed the procedures, we did volleyball.
Is it safe to assume this coach knows the difference in the procedure now?
So that's pretty well where we're at. I'm trying to get it corrected for the girls. If I need to, if you want me, and I probably have time, if you want the girls' colors to be different, I could probably do it. Do you want it to go to red with?
I mean, I think that's, it's a dark charcoal. I don't think it's, I don't think it's black.
It's not black. I agree that it's not black, but there's too much of it in one spot.
Would you, if I could get the girls' uniform done, say a red with white trim?
Just leave them?
Just leave them?
I'd say it's better to want them all the same.
You want them all the same.
Do you need the warm-up?
They're not sweats though.
For two hundred dollars a student, they better be really nice.
Now, they ran sixty-seven fifty, top and bottom, those right there combined there is what they ran. And the, the warm-ups ran forty-nine dollars, top and bottom. That was the cost.
Are there any more questions?
What do we do, Jim, to replace next year if anything in, in any of the sports?
I would say let's take a year off now that we have.
There's nothing in the uniform.
Let's repeat that frame, but my best, let's take a year off.
Let's say, let's say let's not purchase any more uniforms for two years. Because we have, three years ago, we got basketball, we got in football. Two years ago, we got in volleyball. Last year, now we have track. I think we can go two years and not replace any type of uniform. You might have to like a cheerleading or that, which is a different budget example, or in the same budget. Okay.
Football helmets if they're low.
Football will still be continuing. We're buying six helmets and six shoulder pants every year to get our stock.
You don't have that big buy because if you wait, then you're going to have that huge expense like we did.
And we're trying to stay up with the current laws and everything dealing with helmets. And we still are, it still costs us about three thousand dollars to have the, I think it was twenty-three or twenty-seven hundred to do the hel, redo the other helmets.
To get reconditioned every year.
Every year. So basically, we have about, that is the expense that's going to have to be in the next, that's the reason I say let's stay away from uniforms if we can for the next two years and see if we can place some catch-up for some other things. Because most middle school and high school is the same. The uniforms are the same and they can be interme, they got, need large sizes down there. And again, from high school, if we need small sizes, we can get them from the middle school. So basically, the same uniforms. So Solomon is, is in excellent shape for uniforms.
We're all sitting very nicely.
Yes.
Thanks for giving us that update.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Technology update, good news, please. Ish?
Yes.
Okay.
Three things that I guess hit on. Administration and Dean Anne got me motivated to actually go down through the storage room again.
It's a polite way of putting it.
El Celine did a huge favor by letting me borrow their disc cloner, so I paired that with ours. I worked all day Friday and all day today on it. Got through a hundred and seventy-seven machines are cleaned and ready to be sold. Eighty-five are left down there that are either not sellable or broken. Those will probably end up happening to recycle and I've got a company that'll pick those up for thirty cents a pound. Still get a little money out of them. Hopefully, we can get that done here in the next month or so and gain, gain back that storage area.
So when they, when they recycle and they pay that money back, does that go back into our technology fund?
The money that I received from the sale for Purple Way went back into the technology line.
And I don't know, this, this time around, last time we sold them with monitors, keyboards, mice. I just, I don't have enough left down there and what's down there is not the best. So I think this time it'll just be straight computers. I think we sold them for forty.
About between forty and forty-two fifty.
I would think without a monitor, we could probably still get thirty a piece out of the machines, so.
I really didn't want our monitors and keyboards all that much.
Yeah. One guy wanted them, one guy didn't, so it's just kind of luck of the draw. So we'll get that done. Other big thing, finally, finally got NCS in here. We got everything straightened up with servers. Got the new one installed. Our primary domain controller, we got it virtualized and moved over. What I didn't really plan on was when we updated our wireless, we spent a day and a half doing that and it failed miserably when we spun up the new system. Come to find out, the upgrade path that support had told us to go through was wrong. So we spent a day and a half going down the wrong, wrong way, so. Yep. So he came back out. We spent Good Friday, updated everything, spun up new machines. And minus a little bit of a glitch that Tuesday morning coming back, it's been.
You know, honestly, their state assessments were being played with and everything. And really, we haven't had any, any issues on our end with state assessments. Good job, Stan.
So Tuesday morning was a little scary there, but we got through it getting the kids hooked back up. So I feel pretty comfortable with those upgrades. There's still a little bit left to do, but with what's left, I feel comfortable not doing that in-house. And so I'm waiting on NCS. They only billed, the bills I have from them, I've got four bills for twenty-two hundred dollars. The server's been installed since spring break and I have yet to see a bill for that. So I, I don't know, I know they're in the process of moving, so hopefully, you know, we'll get all that squared away here. So that really leaves, the only other thing is the buzzer system. Mr. Boldra, can we go over that?
Yeah.
At the recommendation of Brad, I called over and spoke with Steve Hudson at Security Solutions. Brad, they've done some work over at Courthouse House. Steve came over later that week. We did a walkthrough, the elementary entrance, the high school, the commons, and the district office. Basically, to equip all four of those entries with a strike lock and then also a camera intercom on the outside. The high school office is a little bit more expensive just in the fact that Lynette has two doors that she'd have to monitor. Her system would actually be a touchscreen panel on her desk that would have both, both intercoms, both cameras. The reason you have two quotes, I guess I should say that right off the bat. One of them has PTZ, Pan tilt zoom cameras. You can kind of see right above quantity, one says without PTZ and one says PTZ. So what that is, is a pan tilt zoom camera. Without it, it's just a stationary camera, so if somebody's too close, too far away, you can't move it to see who it is or if there's, you know, maybe somebody hiding off to the side. For a thousand or about eleven hundred dollars more, I mean, that's four doors, you know, about two hundred fifty, three hundred dollars an entry. We can go to that pan tilt zoom. I think over the, the life of the system, I think you'd just probably be happier with that. Having that ability to know that who you are letting in the building is the only person or, you know, not having to tell somebody, hey, can you back up? So we can see who you are. But from that, it's just a pretty straightforward installation, he made it sound as far as the district office and the elementary office. The one thing I need to check back with him on that I noticed while I was sitting over there tonight is the district office electric strike, a three hundred dollar line item. It already has an electric strike on there, so we might be able to cut that out and just reuse the electric strike that's down there. I told him I wanted to go ahead. Right now, the commons entrance has a big mag lock magnet up there. And I just thought for the sake of doing this right, that, you know, for three hundred dollars, we'd just replace that with a strike lock. That way you can take that exit button out, because right now to get out that door, you have to hit an exit button and then it can go through. Or on, you know, game nights or prom, somebody has to come up here to the office, push the button to lock it open.
Well. It feels like it's going to open, but it.
Yeah. So if we put that, if we put it. So, and I, I don't know how many times I've walked in that door, this is going to open. So we'll. We'll replace out the strike lock that way on those event nights when the crash bar is locked open. It will be a factor, nobody will have to run up here and hit a button. Really, outside of that, you know, Lynette will have a touchscreen on her, her desk, but Dee and Beth will have like a console with the screen. Do you have to be at just those places to see who's there? So say Mr. Dooley's here by himself, does he have to be out there or can you get it on the computer?
Can you get it on your phone?
Do not know that.
As far as I know.
I mean, I didn't know, you know, because there's times when, you know, somebody else is there, which is not a big deal.
Interesting to know if the main office, that Lynette's desk would handle all four, so that if somebody's not over there or somebody's not down.
Lynette's will handle four doors and eight inside phones.
So it would, you know.
Really, the only thing at that point is you'd have to run the wires back from those entries. I don't know unless, because I don't know if they can do that over the network or not. So it'd be the only thing existing. And it looks like it's, phones inside are over the Cat Five cable, but it looks like the door buzzers themselves. They don't list that as Cat Five, so I think you'd have to run a wire clear up from the district office. The elementary probably wouldn't be that hard to run one down around the hallway, but.
So there's still locks, is it like a, for anybody else, or is it a fob key system or what? How's that work? It's like for elementary, they go to recess, they come back in, they, they would key unlock.
You just key in like you kind of do.
I don't know if it's like a fob system or not.
No. And I'd ask.
Which you don't have to, I would just add if that was a part of it.
And I think this doesn't have the ability down the road to lock into an access control system. If ever we got, got that far down, wanted to put something like that in.
They can take their keys, that's all right.
And then you can change whether fail safe or fail secure. We have a power outage, obviously, I think you want that fail secure.
They're also probably expensive, the fob is, I mean, that's an, I didn't know. I don't know, some of them, if you go like other places, you could go one, two, three, and it automatically unlocks the door. Like leaves it unlocked if you have, like it gains, like if you come back on the bus, so you can go one, two, three, and it'll block it open for everybody to come in and out. And then it only keeps it open for a half hour and then it automatically locks. So there's not an open door left. And, but I don't know if, how much that is, I don't know what those systems are.
I mean, you'd look at a, a fair amount just for the access control. And even, I'd almost guess even probably equal expense and that would be.
That's what I would think, I think that's a huge expense.
You have to rekey every entrance. I mean, if you put in an access control, you know, obviously, I mean, there's no point in putting one of those in if everybody's got a master key to the building.
I think if everybody had one, I'd rather use, you'd use the fob. I don't know, you, I'm assuming you can key in. Well, and also keys, you know, when they're in the building.
Yeah, and then it traps you.
It traps and logs you when you're in and when you're out.
But that's it, if you didn't rekey all the cylinders, then somebody could just still.
And then you wouldn't know anyways, that's true.
So that would be another big expense is having locks and a rekey on your outside entries. As far as I know, I don't think that's been done since the high school. As far as I know, I don't think that's been done since the high school was built.
Like you said, this system has the expansion capabilities to move into something like that.
Oh, good.
That's a good starter.
Yeah, that you could, I mean, that access control will hook into that electric strike. So you just swipe, and the strike will open. I thought there were some of those, oh, the only other thing that, and it's not on here, and I just kind of remember here tonight, the only other thing that I think would be beneficial to look at on that commons entrance would be a prop alarm on that door. Because kids have a tendency to drag rugs into that door to.
It's not just kids, it's any organization having a meeting in there.
It's adults dragging prom stuff out.
I think that would be beneficial, you know, even if it doesn't send off the alarm on the common, maybe just the light kicks on in the office to let Lynette know that.
Can you find out what the cost difference would be to have fobs versus keys?
That would be a whole, whole other system. We can, I think Steve does that kind of stuff, access controls.
Yeah, he does, it would be a different system that would integrate to this, but basically, it would control this. I would think if we wanted to look at that, we'd probably want to look at doing it structure-wide, so that all the locks are controlled that way, because it not only controls the locks, but keeps you an audit trail of who comes and goes when. Rather than just the entrances, classrooms, or any other lockable door could be done that way, too.
And at that point, you know, I haven't even thought through that, you don't have to do every door. I mean, you would probably do one door at the back of the elementary, your main entries, and breezeway in the lower. I think there was, I think we could probably get through for seven or eight doors. And you don't have to put the access control, if you have two doors, you don't, you just put it on one like we're doing with this. When they hit the button, it doesn't unlock both doors, it's just gonna unlock one.
Some of the stuff they've got available now is wireless, just goes on the door with no wires connected, kind of get batteries up, operates through your network. Might be worth talking to him about.
I mean, we can, I can talk to them and at least get a rough figure on what something like that would be.
Might be something to consider on.
Like I said, I think big, big expense in that would be rekeying all the, because even if you only did eight doors, you'd slap a rekey on your exterior, every single one of them.
I think the one thing on this system that I, I think would be important, Scott, is to make sure that he would connect the high school office to the other two, so that she has the ability to monitor all four doors in, in the absence of staff needed off of. If that takes him, then a little wire across there, and then, so he gets paid for it. It'll operate four stations, so.
Yeah, maybe it's gonna look at. Yeah, the ones that would go on the district office and the elementary office is just one door.
Right, so that would just control those doors, but if those people were gone, whoever's in Lynette's office would have the ability to control all, all four doors.
And my only, and I'll ask him about it, the only thing I'd worry about there is if somebody rings the buzzer down there, and even though Beth would open it, is that still gonna constantly go off up here in this office?
You should be able to use it for, you know.
Yeah. I think, honestly, the only thing you'd be working, looking at there is probably just the extra labor of wires, so. I don't think I have anything else big moving in the technology side of things. Well, I think we'll start collecting iPads, Macs a couple of weeks before school gets out. I don't know. Starting to see the shape of things coming back. I think, I think our biggest problem will probably be chargers.
Yeah. I'll be replacing some, I'm sure.
I, I.
Is there a replacement cost for the charger?
Yeah, yes. Because I, we have to go back through Apple, I can't buy Apple branded products anywhere else, so if it's forty dollars a charger. Twenty dollars for the cable, twenty dollars for locks.
Why do we have to get Apple chargers? Why can't we go buy some somewhere else?
You can. I don't know what kind of quality you're getting, though, like, if you go buy a Walmart charger.
I have good, had good luck with the offering. Have it with our Apple stuff.
I mean, that's something we can decide if we want to look at some cheaper ones. The only thing I keep in mind, you know, we gave them a forty dollar charger at the beginning of the year. I've had a few students that we've had replacement year, and.
Problem is getting that money from them. Well, you can sit here and say, oh, you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay, well.
So do we keep track of that for the following year?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they have to graduate.
Textbooks, you don't get next years until you.
You can all, you use your name, it goes into.
Okay, Amazon's got Apple brand for nineteen dollars, plus a cable for seventeen.
Forty bucks.
You can't really withhold brand language. You can withhold the server by walking across the state, but you can't withhold it.
Yeah, you can't do that.
I forgot, I forgot, get the sign one.
I've already, I think, maybe figured out some of the reconditioning forms this summer.
Thank you very much.
Brad, any other questions?
What's the timeframe on your, your proposals? Are they expiration dates?
One says May thirteenth, one says April twenty-fourth, and I think it's just when he started. I, we got them today, I think he gives a month, month get on. Oh, the other.
It says, it says right on it when it expires.
Yeah. Everything, all the parts have a one-year warranty on them, so.
We could probably get it extended for a few days to prove it at the next meeting, if you might. I don't think I talk too much at that.
Because I, I told him I, if, I didn't commit to this, if this was something we were gonna do, that would probably be a summer project. And I didn't think any final decisions would be made, probably be introduced tonight, decided next month, so that's what. Looking at whether or not we do that, so.
If we could find out about that controlling thing, that'd be, yeah, I mean, we'd kick that, kick this can down the road a long time, so, so we'll have to get it.
The access control?
Well, what we talked about with the multiple, yeah, if you can find out on that, maybe we can decide next meeting.
All righty.
All right, thank you, sir. All righty, committee reports, rec commission.
Well, soccer's underway, anybody's got kids that started Saturday knows that. Summer baseball, softball meeting was last week, had a good turnout for that, it was last week, week before, week before. Anybody that didn't attend that meeting, they can get ahold of Sonja and get signed up on that, their contact information's on the school website. And the contractor started on the irrigation system this week, so, see, he's got the field marked and started tearing it up over there, so hopefully by the end of this week, then they'll next to require a sprinkler system installed.
Sonja said they needed more twelve and thirteen-year-old girls. So if you know any twelve, thirteen-year-old girls, come by.
Some of them already started fixing it.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Brad. After-school program.
Well, first I want to start out, I had hoped to have more reports for you tonight out of our new after-fund system, but it just didn't go quite the way we wanted it to, so we're still kind of redoing the reports, looking at them and deciding how we're gonna configure, and we'll have more reports as the month goes along, for you to look at and decide what reports you want to see on a regular basis. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that I have sent out our insurance package to two other companies, and asked for bids, so that we'll have three bids to look over before we renew our complete package. Two of those will come from UMC, and one of them will come from another insurance company. So we'll, we'll have those, and we'll have a mineral gene, so we can review those, and hopefully get a little better, right, costing area. I made a presentation to the United Way Board two weeks ago, and they gave me thirty minutes to talk about my favorite topic, so it was fun. And we'll see what happens with that. Right now, we have our butterflies, we're gonna transfer those to our butterfly house tomorrow. So we've been working on the different, the caterpillars and the, the growth and transformation of butterflies. We've had a presentation from Mr. Daly, and the kids are all excited, they have their names on the little tabs, and they're all ready to make that transfer. Wednesday is, we designated it as a craft day, and each one of our high school presenters is going to bring a new craft in, and the kids are gonna do a little rotation and make some different crafts to take home or to leave and display with us, and we're kind of excited about that. With Jim's pregnancy, she's unable to clean for us, she's been cleaning our building. And so Leah, one of our high school aides, has agreed to do the cleaning, and Liz is going to kind of oversee that and help with that. So we've got that under control. And Mr. Perez has just fit right in with touring, we're thrilled to have him, and the kids are really responding, so he stays right after him. It's a, it's a different atmosphere, they're kind of shaking on the floor.
Any questions?
I did have one extra thing I thought about, rec commission-wise. We talked the other night about, we talked about a couple of meetings about a sign, a digital sign that took place somewhere in the community. You know, we, several years ago, we talked about trying to get a digital sign out in front of a school, and it just never panned out. Well, we, we talked about all the events going on in the community, and how a sign of some type down around the park area would be probably the best way to inform the community passing down Old Forty. Hunter Mill brought it up at the city meeting last week, or week before, and, and they thought it was a really good idea. And thought, you know, that possibly the city, the school, the rec commission could all partner together, maybe with a couple of businesses in town, or some community support, and try to start a fundraiser to get that purchase, possibly get the FFA or some, one of the school groups to help, put, do some work, or the Boy Scouts, or somebody, do some work on putting, putting up some type of a brick stand. Hunter had a picture of one that was done by, I believe he said it was the FFA group, or one of the boys that real kind of ringed, led the thing in this city. And it was a brick or limestone columns on either side.
It was the Boy Scout, it was his, it was his project.
It was a project, yeah.
It was his Boy Scout project, yeah.
And he had a picture that one of his relatives had saved on his phone, and it was really neat, with two brick columns, and the sign was in between. But I thought, well, maybe the, be a school group, or the Boy Scouts, if somebody wanted to help that with some of the fathers in the community, we could get that done. And the city already has an electricity department for us. So that's something to think about, I know money's tight, we kind of estimated it might take about eight thousand dollars to do, with all the labor donated and everything, so I tossed that out there for thought and conversation, but.
I like the idea.
Couldn't talk to you out there by the side, Paul.
Yeah, as much as we promote the website, there's just a lot of people don't go to the website, but almost everybody in town, at one point or another during the day, drives down Old Forty.
My house is traffic accidents.
It's low down to read the sign. Something to think about, and I thought I might send an email to Mrs. Griffin, see if there's anybody in the FFA group, or Boy Scout group, or something that might be interested in the group helping do that, to learn a little bit about foundations, and Mason work, and stuff like that.
Does everybody get stopped by the train once a day? I say, you said my friend.
Which time? We have like five to come through.
It's not as bad here as Amblay, Amblay, they stop and block.
Used to be that they stopped.
All righty, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Moving on, discussion action items, approved bills, does anybody have any questions or comments about the bills as they were presented?
The one report I noticed was printed out on the new software, I really like it.
I thought it was hard to read.
I thought it was much easier to read.
Good, 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 good.
I'm not sure it's what you used to. And I think there was more information shows up on there.
Yeah, I think there is more information, we'll be able to fine tune that and, and work on it, so. That's what I like, I think one of the things I like the best about the software is that you can go in and configure the reports, and put them in the Excel format, and make all the changes, and configure them to the way that you want to see, the information you want to see, so.
Kind of getting off subject, I kind of want to go back, did we talk about Kate Toy today? He's the teacher of the year, is to mention. Okay, I can't, sorry.
Any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve the bill?
I'll make a question.
Motion made by Jessica, do I have a second? Second by Tally. All in favor, please raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Everybody's favorite section of the agenda, the review board policy JJA-JGCC.
That's just, yeah, that's half of that section, it's kind of like personnel, it's a big, the two biggest sections are personnel and students, and.
Let's hear the high notes.
I don't know if I have a lot of high notes, highlights.
Do you have any recommendations for your chain of?
No, in fact, you know, that's what I did earlier in the year, I spent a lot of time getting all the new stuff and putting it in there, and asking you to approve it, and you did, and so I just stuck it all in there. Spent a lot of time with that, I know, you know, you don't necessarily think of that, but something I do, but that does take, it takes time, and it takes time to go through it, and it's one thing that I've really learned this year is, is the board policy book. You know, I think everybody ought to, at least in my position or yours, take some time to really know what's in there, and, and so it's been good. You know, I, I've read it so many times, I don't know if there's, I think if there being any highlights. Because a lot of it is actually similar to what's in personnel, it's just dealing with students and those types of things. Talks about searches, students, and homeless, and truancy, and, you know, it gets into, you know, if a kid wants to drop out, you know, things that we have to advise them about, in terms of what a person will typically make, who is a dropout, and those kinds of things, whether they get their GED or not, and then, yeah, searches, I'm kind of, I've been kind of scrolling through here, and I don't necessarily see anything that really, you know, one thing you might want to look at is GCAC, which is interrogation and investigations. You know, we do have, you know, a little more latitude to, you know, when we investigate, you know, what we can do, and kind of what we can't. We're allowed a little latitude, a little more latitude in the educational system for reasonable, you know, suspicion. So that might be of interest to you. You know, there's some things that we just, you know, a lot of times, parents think, oh, I deserve to be there if my kid's gonna be investigated. Well, hmm, not really, no, you don't. Now, if we're gonna call the police, I would definitely say that we need to let you know that we are going to bring a police officer and investigate, but that Mr. Dooley, or Mr. Cope, or I would be in on that, because then we also have to advocate for the children and protect the children. So that's, that's kind of our, our role, but I would definitely say that if we have to go to that point, then, then you need to be informed of that.
Part JCE complaints has Skip Landis in there, so we probably ought to.
Yes, I, I, I need to get that. Yes, I, I need to get that changed. In fact, it just needs to read just superintendent and it should have the person's name and address and all that. Yeah, you're right. There's a couple of those I've, I've missed. There's, I shouldn't say I've missed, but just haven't gone back in to retype it.
Would they ever put their name specifically?
I think it's on the address.
But that was, you can see, see how long ago it was that they updated that.
Probably two thousand and two. Is that one of those?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, the JCDAA is pretty new and I know, you guys are, some of you are past this, but that is tobacco and electronic cigarettes. It used to just kind of be cigarettes or tobacco. So, now we got the electronic cigarettes in there. You know, the weapons has changed a little bit and how they define what weapons are. You guys are, you guys are pretty fast scrolling through this. I'm just now going to the JCE.
Oh, and complaints about school rules. We have a complaint shall be in writing filed by, filed within twenty days. I don't know that anybody even follows that.
I know. I mean, that's, who would know that unless you read this thing?
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty... But...
JCE under complaints.
You know, these are, these are some things too that when we go through these, it reminds us of things that we need to either put in maybe a staff handbook or a student handbook, just so that parents are aware that that is, that is the expectation. So...
The AEDs, it says you have to be qualified to use it. They no longer require that. Anybody can use an AED now?
Right, right.
Pretty foolproof.
Yeah, that tells exactly what to put it.
Doesn't work unless it's applied right. Can, I'm sure we've asked this before, but can we get a digital copy of this from?
Yes, but I wanted to get, I wanted to get it, get through all of it before we, we did that.
So, we don't have to retype it? That would give us a digital copy?
Well, the thing is, if you get it through, then they're going to charge you for all of it.
We already paid for it. I assume we paid for it once to get this done.
I think every time, well, I...
If they're giving us a digital copy is what we got.
But Jessica, you have a program. We can, you can transfer it all, so we can edit it, right?
I can edit it. I don't know that you guys could.
We could buy this in program.
But yeah, yeah. It's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, we could buy this in program.
It's an acronym.
It's a DOBA acronym. It's not just the reader, it's the full blown program.
Yeah.
It would be handy for Dina to have.
Yeah, we need to, we need to.
It only works if it was converted. If it was a scanned copy, it wouldn't.
No, you can convert it.
You can convert it.
Yeah. You can change a word or Excel document or you can change it back to that.
But we've done this before.
You can change fonts.
But see, I think the two hundred and fifty... I think to spend that money to get that converter is well worth it because we can do it with a number of different documents, number one. And number two, it's cheaper than ordering it from KSB or, you know, stuff. You know, if I, if I call up and I ask for a specific policy, they'll send it to me. But if I call up and say, can you send me the whole thing?
They're going to get it charged.
Yeah. So, when I found, you know, when we found issues this year with things that we needed some backup on, policies on, I was able to call and get those.
I got nothing else going on.
You know, these really need to be updated about every six months or whenever the new ones come out and that hasn't been done.
No. I mean, in the meantime, I can help you. I can, because I am very much sure they wouldn't mind if I...
So, are there any other questions or comments from anybody about? Four eighty-one pages.
I'll put the next group in, or the other half of this for next month. And then, really, there's section K and that's about it. For Jim, have you gotten through all of it?
Time to start over.
Well, I don't think you have to do, I mean, unless you're...
But as changes come out.
Right.
Then you'll have their recommended policies that come out in June.
Right.
That, that will present probably in July or August and then we'll add those two each year.
Cool. Somebody just needs to get it.
Yeah.
We just need to stay up on top, stay on top.
Any other questions or comments about the board policy J? Not hearing any. Six E, less prices.
You mean C, six C?
Yeah, that'll work.
I'm sorry.
I've got a line going through mine. It looks like he...
Okay, mine isn't popping up. Having trouble getting to it. Why do I have a trouble getting to it? Oh, here we go. Cindy put this together, or I'm sorry, Cindy. That was my old food director. Sheila put this together. In the next couple of months, she's going to be filling out the paid lunch equity report. No minimum of ten cent raise on paid lunches will probably be required. She's, she's gotten all these prices together to kind of show you where we, where we fit in with, with everybody else. And, and we've been kind of periodically raising these, you know, since I've been here, or what you did prior to that. But the goal is to reach an average of two dollars and seventy cents. This has been raised since last year, which was two sixty-five was the average they wanted this to get to. Currently, our prices are grade schools at two fifteen, middle school and high school is two thirty-five. You know, I think her recommendation and I would agree that you probably need to raise it a dime. Do you ever, when you say they, who are you talking about, the they, to raise the prices? Uh, the state. So...
I need a motion to raise it. Now, does anybody have any questions or comments? We're concerned. And I guess what you're recommending is we raise it and then we have a motion and we just get it done for next year, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to think about it and do it next month, you certainly can, but I, I know.
It's really kind of, so.
But it's pretty much.
I guess, do I have a...
How soon do we have to be up to the teens?
Well, I don't think that you have to be. I think that this is their, their recommendation somewhat offset. I mean, the cost of food has gone, gone up quite a bit. And, you know, to really be able to, for a middle school, high school, especially the high school kid to eat for two dollars and thirty-five cents a day, that's pretty darn good, you know, because we, they're on their own self-serve. I mean, they can...
Well, I think what, the, see, the federal and the state reimbursement is two dollars and seventy cents and they want your local price to equal that.
Yeah.
Because right now, your full-priced child is eating the less money than what you're being reimbursed on your free. If I understand that.
Right, that's right.
On free, yeah.
So, they're just wanting us to bring it up to what they're paying.
They're wanting us to bring our full price up to what they're giving us for a free child.
Why, I guess I don't understand why they get to make that recommendation.
Because they're giving you the money.
Because not, because if I, I mean, they're paying for their children's school lunch and they're donating for the free lunch. We don't get like that.
They will punish for the ones that are paying for the ones that aren't.
Yeah.
That's a recommendation of our, our fine state.
Well, you, you have to, you know, whatever you don't get from the state and, and what people that pay, if, if we're not covering our costs, then you have, you have to subsidize it. And so, you know, those that can pay, you know...
So, where are we at on our total numbers? Do we cover our costs now or how short are we?
We have a thirty thousand dollar transfer scheduled to go in there and I'm not sure that it'll bring up the balance to...
For this year alone, we're thirty thousand in the negative?
Well, we're, we're going to be right now. I think we're, I don't know, whatever that cash summary is, it's in the book.
Whatever the what comes out?
The cash summary that, at the end of March. Let's look at it and see what it says.
What's it following there on the cash?
Six eight two. And if you look at food service, it's fourteen. And it's negative five thousand and seventy dollars at the end of March. So, you can see that we've taken in a hundred and thirty-seven thousand and we spent a hundred and sixty-two. We started in there, we're just under...
I mean, you know, we're required to, you know, add all these vegetables to our, and, and all the fresh stuff. And it's, you know, you guys have seen what grocery costs have done. It's just crazy.
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice but to...
The cost needs to go up or it's going up. Certainly is going up a lot faster than what the price we charge at.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
It'd be different if they eat it.
And that's the fact. It can be different if they already eat it.
Yeah, I'd say if they had a little bit more choice, might be a little more palatable, a little pun intended. We've got some kids who won't eat it even though they're faithful because they don't like what the choice is.
All right, do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion's been made to up the prices as presented by Jessica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Give a second to Brad. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All righty. Okay, letter D. Mr. Dooley, you want to take this one?
Yeah, I will. Have we reckoned?
It's, it's, it's in the Dropbox, sixteen. It's got all the new hires starred. The only one that I don't think you've done is Michaela Jamison is the, is the new one. But then, if you want to just go ahead and hire the certified staff for next year, that motion, it's there.
Okay, so we just make the motion to hire all certified staff.
Do you want me to tell you about Michaela?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Michaela?
If you like to talk so much, absolutely.
We hired her for, hired her for our position and it was, had a lot of good, I felt, good interviews, Mr. Cope and I interviewed them. We actually met her at a career fair at Fort Hays State University in March. She came right up to us, saw that we had art posted, very interested in the position and talked to us, found out there that she coached, or excuse me, that she, well, that she coached volleyball at Thomas Ford Prep Mary, or Thomas Ford Prep at Hayes. So, she has two years of experience with that. She played a couple of years of volleyball at Fort Hayes and ran track at Fort Hayes. And then, so we visited her with her for a little bit. We didn't really go through a formal interview at that time and then she came and visited and we gave her tour, interviewed her and felt like she was the best fit for our sport. Young, energetic, very, very, I think what impressed me the most, very responsible at, at a young age.
Talented.
What?
Talented.
I was going to say, very talented artist. She wasn't going to go into teaching. She was actually going to open up her own studio and then got to coaching volleyball at TMP and said, I sort of like this kid thing. And so, she was going to open up her own studio. She's a fantastic artist as well.
And she's a little, she's not fresh, she went to a few extra years of college because she got back into teaching. So, she's twenty-three, so she's not, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two, straight out of college. But I, you know, I just, we felt that she'd interact well with our kids and we were very appreciative. And she would be able to fill some needs, supplement our needs that we need as well. And that's not why we hired her, but that's, that played her a role.
Is she bringing your family with her?
She is embarrassing.
She did her student teaching at, she's from Hoisington originally, graduated from Hoisington. I don't think she did, no, she did her student teaching at Hayes Middle School. I can't remember the name.
She said she coached a couple of years at...
She coached at TMP.
While she was in college.
She did not teach. And then she coached club volleyball, which is a whole, I mean, that's a whole other season. Club volleyball is a huge, and she was...
She coached junior varsity at TMP.
She was involved in, in volleyball.
Played two years at Fort Hayes.
No, what, the coach, the club volleyball, what I'm trying to say.
Club volleyball, yeah.
She coached it or played it?
Coached it. I'm sure she played it when she was in high school. I didn't ask her that.
So, I guess since she's...
The other ones have been approved and...
We talked about them in exact concession, but have we ever formally approved them?
Yes, yes.
Sharon's going with not halftime. She's a little more of a halftime.
Right.
Okay, so I was trying, I thought now next year, is it, it's more than half? It's what?
It's like five, seven, six.
Five eights?
Six eights.
Six eights? That's three fourths.
Three fourths.
It's almost one.
Seventy-five percent, yeah.
Very close to what she is.
Is it? I mean, I didn't realize that.
She's teaching one more class than she does this year. She's just teaching one more class than she did this year.
Because it's the same.
I mean, you might want to go through that list and just make sure, but... It's a good-looking list.
So, I guess are there any questions on the certified staff list? If there's not, do I have a motion to...
I make a motion to approve the certified staff list as, as recommended for the twenty thirteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Second by Tally. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All righty, now, parents as teachers, instructors.
We found a diamond in the rough, I think, in Kristen Portelli. I, I can't remember what I told you about her, but she, her mother-in-law is actually a PAT for twenty-three years, last two in Abilene, twenty-one years, I guess, I think she was at Wamigo. And we kind of joked with her a little bit about how intimidating that must have been, having your mother-in-law be a PAT coordinator as you're having children. Anyway, she was very, very knowledgeable. She is going to, she knows, she knew so much about it already. And she had shadowed her mother-in-law. She's, you know, she's, she really understands the process. She can write the grant. She hasn't had a lot of experience, but her mother-in-law is willing to help her write the grant and, I mean, she just... Anyway, so that's kind of, that's who we'd like, Kristen Portelli is who we'd recommend to, to fill that spot. Now, she's going to probably, obviously, since we haven't had somebody since the end of February, she's going to put some more time in and get the grant written and everything, try and get those funds spent so that we can apply for the same next year, so.
So, she would start later?
She's, she started.
Okay.
We had her here at kindergarten roundup, Carrie and her also get together and, you know, have some conversations to get that transfer, that transition, make that work. She started. I know she's already registered to go to the training in Iowa. It's a week or two weeks?
It's a full week. She'll be next Monday.
Yeah, so she will. Um, and she was there for kindergarten roundup because that's also when the Dickinson County does their child well check, you know, it's in conjunction with, so that's why she was there. So then, like, Carrie had all of her parents as teachers, uh, families come in, and so it was a great opportunity for them to meet her. So it was, it was just a good dialogue, yep.
So I guess we need a motion to approve her, correct?
Yeah. I mean, she's already working, I hope you approve her.
Moved by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, driver's ed instructor.
Right now, we have Mr. Cross, and he did it last year, he's been doing it for several years, and I think it worked out last year to him all by himself, so I would recommend it.
Any questions? If not, do I have a motion to approve Tim as the driver's ed instructor? Okay, a motion made by Tally, do I have a second?
Yep.
Todd?
I have a second.
Brad? Okay, all, all in favor, please raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, future agenda topics. If anybody has any, please email them to myself and Mr. Boulder. Or, unless you have any, now, we're writing down. All righty, um, leave seven A, executive session. I think we'll take about a five-minute break before that and reconvene an executive session, let's say, right at nine o'clock. That'll work, do I have a motion to do whatever I just said?
Question.
Okay, a motion made by Jessica, do I have a second? By Todd, all in favor, please raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. We're in recess for, I guess, about eight minutes, and we'll reconvene.
I think they were really impressive.
I thought they were, I, I enjoyed the two of them.
This one?
They were, they were very...
You're taking pictures, right?
We spent forever in my brain.
Kind of just, you know, you get in your own environment.
Right.
Good thing Charlie's there.
Do you want this back in here?
Oh.
That's the... Contact agreement, please put that up. I'm sure if you wanted it back in here. Yeah.
Did you hear now that, um...
Yeah.
If lights outside, and if trees going outside, Sarah wants to be done with tutoring. Yeah, I got that memo.
Yes, Scott's like, I don't know why, you know why, and I said, well, I think she asked, because it was quiet. I said, but I don't know.
Story was a little convoluted. She was, she was being forced to help the other kids.
Well, Scott asked her, and she said, well, what do you, what do you do? If you don't have...
But she has homework, she's not doing it. She has reading, she's not doing it.
Yeah, the reading. He told her, he said, um, you know, I can take them, you can worry about them outside.
Yeah, she was playing it pretty good. I think Nick's got his thumb on it.
I know she did.
I thought I'd be polite. I'll wait till I read that one over there.
Yeah, David's from...
Chip in New York.
But you know what's weird? I don't care if it's a flower church or not.
You know?
Is it wild or hot?
No, what's the restaurant that Ed, um, Hawk?
Laca Cita.
Laca Cita, okay.
Yeah, the one over on Cropper Street.
On Cropper.
Next time, can you bring beans and turkey?
You want to bring beans and tortilla at that time? Well, I have a supper. Pork burger in the box.
I'd be eight hundred pounds.
Tortilla, or pistadas and rice.
Scott? You take the athletic blanket off the front of website? Can we? Can you?
Since it was a month ago. What do we change on the calendar?
I don't know much about that. I said, you can do it, see what it's given about.
The different licenses? Yeah. Instead of using, we were feeding advanced into the website calendar, and we also had our Google Calendar. So we took away the calendar on the website, and we're doing calendar trading. Unfortunately, they didn't...
Hey, you have to open up the events in Google to be able to see the whole information, don't you?
Yeah, the ones that it tries to have to... I don't know what you're doing, you see if there's another way to present that Google calendar on the website.
I feel like right now, it's not even letting me open some good for early events.
It doesn't really work too well.
You know, I've had several people come to me that they can't see what's going on.
I've got a few that I'm like...
I bet. That's right.
All right, we got nine o'clock. So, as the motion said, we'll now go into executive session to include Mr. Boulder. Was it? You said time, you said thirty minutes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Starting here at nine o'clock.
I can just take more if you want to.
Yeah.
You leave it, I might need it.
You can take one with you, right?
Scott?
I expect you to be wearing those when we go in.
Yeah, that'll look nice.
They don't like them. My opinion on those.
Want to hear it?
No, he talked to me. I didn't say anything, he said.
My son would think they were green. Are we back on red? Okay. All right. At nine thirty-six, because I can't see that clock. We're back in a regular session after executive session. We have one thing left to go on.
I want to... We have a resolution to approve a separation agreement and accept resignation of Jeremy Holder. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the separation agreement and the release signed by Jeremy Holder, that the Board accept Mr. Holder's letter of resignation according to the terms of separation agreement and release, and that the Board authorize the Board President to sign the negotiated letter for reference, or a reference of Mr. Holder.
It's been moved by Todd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. All right, Todd.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Todd and seconded by Jessica that we adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Yeah, I'll probably do that.
Thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome.
We're gonna be like in big trouble.
I'll take something of your.
I'll put everything right in here.
She comes in and finds books under her table.